It is 4:11 PM, January 24th. We'll call the board meeting of trustees to order. And thank you all for being here this afternoon. Hopefully, everybody's having a great start to their new year. We've got a lot of good business to discuss today and looking forward to hearing everybody's thoughts on all these important matters that we have to talk about. What we'd like, what I'd like to do is just call the meeting to order and first, open up the meeting for any public comment on any agenda items.
Everybody signed up, so I think we're clear.
Okay. Hearing none. We will then move on to agenda item number two, contract. Well, first of all, Tim Burdick, thank you so much for joining us today.
Absolutely. Thank you for.
Marquette and Associates. Yep. Thank you for willing to work with us and, you know, we look forward to partnership and to all the great things you and your firm have to offer. The Community Investment Trust, thank you so much for being here this afternoon. And with that, we'll move on to agenda item number two, contract for investment.
We'll need to vote and approve that contract if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah. The vote approved and I got one to.
That's agenda item number two.
Well, no.
Of course not. Investment Management Services.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Investment Management Agreement with Marquette and Associates. Yeah.
Okay, correct. Sorry. Sorry, guys.
Okay. So I suppose what we can do is just kick it over to Tim. And if, you know, Tim, did you want to kind of walk through the agreement or if everybody's had a chance to review it? We can, we can ask. I don't know if Adam's here.
I will say that, yeah, I've worked with Adam. We reviewed it. I reviewed it. Worked with Tim. It was very straightforward. Nothing in there. Brad Alfred also took a look at it.
Okay.
Business standpoint, business term standpoint, solid. So we didn't really any issues in going to, yeah, the final agreement that's been signed by Marquette and legal. So it's just up to the board now to vote to approve it unless there's any questions. We'll just take a vote.
And get a motion to approve the agreement with Marquette and Associates.
So moved.
Then properly moved. Can I get a second? Okay. Any questions from any of the board members? Hearing none. We will ask for a vote. If we approve, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose. Okay. As have it, the contract has been approved and I will be certain to sign that. Moving on to item number three, selection of a custodian. And Mr. Burdick, I think you put together a presentation of a few custodians that you recommend we consider.
Look at that technology.
Yeah.
Correct. Step one, and thank you again for executing the contract, bringing Marquette on board. Step two in the process is selecting a custodian to hold the assets, whether it's a separately managed account, which you may have over time, individual stocks and bonds, mutual funds, commingled funds, having a central bank.
Let me just take a sec as I see some flipping of pages. Tab four, you'll see this on tab four.
Yeah, thank you.
So what we did was we worked with roughly 30 different custodians, custodial banks around the country. What we did specifically was look not only for organizations that worked within the state of Tennessee, but also had a location, physical presence in Orpheusboro. And then from there, built out the list. Again, essentially, what we're looking for is, just going through, the names selected, and what we did was we sent out a blind bid. We sent them what the initial portfolio we thought would look like, so they knew how many accounts, what names were, et cetera. Sent that out to four different organizations here, Fifth Third, U.S. Bank, Truist, and Pinnacle, and got back some RFP-type information regarding capabilities. Summarized here very briefly. In conversations with Craig, I understand the city does a lot of work with Pinnacle, so we did reach out to them. Custody is really not what they do. It says they have $3 billion in assets. $3 billion in the world of custody is not much of anything. As we had conversations with them about capabilities, they're limited. It's not, it's not their main business. It's not necessarily, they could probably do the business upfront, but over the course of the years, frankly, I think you'd be better served elsewhere. Truist Bank is another bank we only have one relationship with, and it's, again, a bigger presence down here. Our custodial experience with them has been a bit uneven. So we came down sort of with Fifth Third and U.S. Bank. Our recommendation is to utilize U.S. Bank. This is one of the six or seven sort of names in the industry that do this. They do focus specifically on middle market, so they do have multi-billion dollar plans, but they have a number of plans that we've worked with or acquired over time in the 50 to maybe five or $700 billion range. Pricing on the next page turns out to work out as well. They basically, it's two basis points on the assets until you get the fee break with a $12,000 minimum, so it'd be a $12,000. So they're our least expensive option as well.
What about those monthly fees? I looked at that and I thought if that's per asset, does that really add up or is that insignificant?
You're going to have about 10 of those, so it's going to be about $800 a year.
Okay.
So you take the assets, add in the 800, you're at about $11,000. You're still right about at that minimum. So again, you really just think about it as the two basis points as this portfolio grows over the years and then works way down to 1.7, 1.75. So, so from a fee perspective, they're good. Of the groups that we looked at, again, the largest organizations, Deutsche Bank, State Street, Northern Trust, don't have any interest at all in this type of portfolio. They're looking at the billion-dollar plans. So looking, and they're frankly going to be very expensive and very cumbersome to work with. So we kind of left them and went to, not going to say tier two, not from a quality perspective, but from a size perspective, and looked at banks and Fifth Third and U.S. Bank in particular, organizations we've worked with a lot over multiple decades. And just looking at the type of portfolio we're looking to set up and the needs, the group came together and said, you pretty much told me, go get U.S. Bank to work with. So that's Marquette's recommendation for a custodian moving forward.
Are they the only banks locally that do the custodian work? That, you know, I understand there's some parameters here. Are they? Do you ever do an RFP for this or is it just a matter of, I mean?
We do an RFP annually. We send out to about 30 banks across the country.
Okay.
And through that, we kind of find out where capabilities are for everyone.
Where the fee is.
But we also find out who's interested and who's not in new business. Right now, there's a number of banks that are not interested in new business unless it's extraordinary because they're hurting for people, they're hurting for resources. And a lot of them will come out, we used to send out an RFP, it's a billion-dollar foundation. I sent out nine RFPs, we got back one response. Because people just don't want certain types of business that's kind of high maintenance right now in the custody world. So it's, you have to, we do talk to everybody on an annual basis to sort of find out who's interested and what everybody's capabilities are and who's, who's building their systems up, who's not, et cetera. And this U.S. Bank has been one of the steadier groups. I've been with Mark, I've worked with them for over 20 years.
Just always like to do things locally quickly.
Yep.
On that monthly fee, so you said we're going to have about 10 assets total? I mean, is that, that's not like if you hold, you know, a list of individual stocks?
That's not those. Those are just mutual fund commingled funds. If they're going to shadow account, any hedge funds, private equity, private debt.
Gotcha. So it's not every asset, it's just those types of assets?
Just those types of assets.
Yeah.
Do board members have any other questions on custodian, what a custodian does, or type of services we expect to receive, or anything like that? Craig, I assume we need to vote to approve Marquette's recommendation.
Put on that, then we'll get things set up with the U.S. Bank, get an agreement in place and go forward.
I'll make the motion that we choose U.S. Bank to provide our custody relationship.
Properly moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional questions? All that favor the motion, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Tim, thank you for that recommendation. The board has approved U.S. Bank.
Thank you.
All right. Fourth item on the agenda is adoption of the investment policy. Tim, did you want to talk to us a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Okay. I want to use the red line version. I had sent both over, both the red and clean. This is easy enough to read that I think the red line version is acceptable. As I mentioned, when Nat and I made the initial presentation, we read through the policy and we actually thought the policy frankly was quite good. So we really went through it. We made some recommended changes, but the changes revolved really around four things. Number one, and you'll see it sort of as you go through, pretty consistently through the document, is we wanted to clarify investment advisor, which is Marquette versus the investment managers and what the roles and responsibilities of each. And then more specifically designate where has OCIO, where the advisor has responsibility versus where we're recommending to the board. So a lot of the language, if you had an opportunity to go through it, is really based, a lot of the redlining is based on that. So that's number one. The second, I think, main point of the updates that we made was to put in a specific target rate of return at 7.5%. We talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. You have a 5% distribution. We want to count something for inflation. We want the number to be reasonable, not the inflation we've had the last couple of years, something we forecast going forward. We looked at the asset allocation modeling and the type of portfolio that we were going to recommend, and 7.5 turned out to match up with both. Again, it counts for 2.5% inflation, which is probably a decent long-term number. Again, not looking historically, but looking forward, plus that 5% annual distribution. We want a specific number in here because frankly, you want to be able to judge us over time based on something specific. And this is one way to do it. If we just say a reasonable rate of return, we can make that argument all day long. Here, we've got something specific we're aiming for, we'll be able to track over time.
Do you ever weave CPI into that, though? I mean, wouldn't that go up and down with the inflation and the market?
But inflation and the market don't tend to be correlated very often. So quite often, when inflation is high, like last year, 2022, the markets go down. And so all of a sudden, you'll have the numbers be, you'll have a lot of volatility in the numbers. 7.5, it's just, that's, again, we're not going to hit it every year because markets will do what the markets do. But it does give, especially over three and five year, which is policy is set up for, a reasonable, consistent target to try and achieve. And really helps us from the asset allocation perspective because then you can see kind of what we expect, and we'll show in the asset allocation study in a bit.
If you review the investment policy segment every year, you can make changes.
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll want to do that. Probably the first meeting of each year. I'm an ex-auditor. I like documents. I like things being kind of taken care of. So at the first meeting each year, even if there's even minimal changes, I'd like to bring the policy back just to ensure that it's current.
Thank you.
So 7.5 is the number two. I just highlighted in yellow, oh, please.
Before you go forward from that, I'm sorry, I was going to, I just was trying not to interrupt, but 7.5% number, that just came from basically saying 5% plus 2.5% of expected inflation. Is that essentially what that?
It is. Because you had, yes. And that was sort of the tone that was in, somewhere in this policy, when you talked about distributions and you talked about keeping up with inflation, but you never married the two together in a specific number. So that's, clarified that.
All right. All right. Sorry.
No worries at all. Please ask the questions. We'll also have a kind of a broad benchmark of 60/40 at the here at the top under C that will get utilized. It's just another way of looking at broad markets and then we'll compare your actual performance over time. So you'll be able to see what the, the other investments that we make and, you know, whether they're adding or detracting value.
So I had a question about that one.
Yep.
About the benchmarks. Couple of things on that was when I went on the allocation section of the email that we got, you know, just where you kind of spelled out a little bit more clearly the specific allocations.
Yes.
You got the S&amp;P 500 in there as the benchmark for the large cap stock. You kind of don't have that anywhere. And the Russell 3000 is okay. I'm a little concerned with 50%, you know, how you came up with that, particularly if we're going to have 25% of our account in alts. It's not, you know, we kind of don't account for that anywhere in that mix that I can tell.
No, it's.
So as our investment policy says, that's saying that's what we're going to use to judge. I mean, it's not the 7.5, it's really that. It's a combination of both.
Well, it's a combination of those two. And then you'll also, you'll have peer group rankings. So you'll look at that and you'll look versus your.
Yeah.
You'll be able to judge based on that as well. And then you'll look, be able to see the individual manager selections and you'll be able to judge, or take a look at underperformance, outperformance, so you'll be able to look at. It's a bit of, as you know, it's a bit of a mosaic. It's not a single number or a single item.
Is there a decent way to get the alts in there? I mean, in terms of expectationally, when we look at a benchmark and we've got that large of an allocation to alts, is there a way that we could plug that into that?
You can kind of go two ways. You can go general like this, 60/40, three different, or you can go specific where we'll pretty much go allocation by allocation and bring them all in. And there's advantages and disadvantages to both. If you bring everybody in, then you've taken away, when you're, when you're judging total return versus benchmark, you've taken away those decisions. Because our decision to put money in real estate versus fixed income, well, that's in the benchmark, so you're not going to, that doesn't add or take away. Defensive equity or hedged equity versus long equity. When you get specific, and I do have clients that have specifics, so we can, we can do either. When you have specific, you're taking away the asset allocation decisions from the evaluation. And then it really just comes down to managers.
I'm in agreement with the broad, certainly, I mean, I know exactly what you're talking about because if you list out all the benchmarks, you're just going to hit all the benchmarks with all the different categories that you have, right? All the different pieces of the, of the pie.
Right.
But I guess I'm just, I was a little bit kind of thinking, well, essentially, what we're going to be doing is having that entire alts bucket essentially going against the Russell 3000.
Actually, when we looked at it, part, the real estate and the infrastructure is kind of designated to go up against bonds, where the hedged equity and the private equity and the private debt is, we categorized in the equity. That's, the 60/40 wasn't random, that's how we got to those numbers.
Okay.
But I do, I do get your point that it is, if there was one, if there was a Russell 3000 or a Bloomberg Ag for alts, absolutely, let's bring it in. But once you get to the alts, you really do have to be specific.
It's not that big of a deal. I mean, it's a place to start. We can always try to fine tune that if we decide to, but I mean, it's a good place to start. I just want to make sure.
And let's, yeah, if you're thinking in that direction, we can go with this for now and then next year, again, policy gets updated every year, we can look at a couple alternatives and I can maybe show you a couple of alternatives and.
And it'll take us a while to get to that 25% or, you know, anyways. It's all good. I just want to make sure.
Well, Tim, in addition to Rick's point that he was making, I actually have some questions, just in general, about the benchmark. I think that's against our one-year total return. Is that what that is, that benchmark is against?
It's, in the policy, it does, it says between a three- or five-year basis.
Three and five.
Three and five.
Yeah, three and five, here in part B, point B below here. Three and five. Now, we will, in our reporting, you'll see it in all time periods.
Yeah.
Specifically from the policy and being in compliance with policy is three and five.
Okay. That makes sense. Because I guess my second question, which I believe you just answered, is when you provide your performance reports, I'm assuming like the benchmarks you have laid out on page 11 and your asset allocation, all those will reflect there anyway.
Yes.
So there'll be opportunity to compare it there as well.
You will have no shortage of data to take a look at.
So that's kind of what I was thinking about. We'll see it anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Let me move forward. I highlighted, and I don't think we made a change on this.
We did. We did change that. We just said applicable Tennessee law.
Okay.
I think it's covered by the trust agreement as to what statutes, it just didn't make it into the draft of the document, so, but applicable Tennessee laws, fine. We're not going to violate that.
So what part are you talking about on that?
The highlighted sentence in there wasn't completed.
It's different in your book.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, and you, yeah, in your book, it's, you've got the clean version in your book. This is the red line.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
So I had a question on that page that you got there. I'm good with the change you made or whatever, but the, on number eight, 4.3A8.
Okay.
I have no idea what that means. The factors that, if relevant, must be considered in managing and investing the trust's funds are the asset's special relationship or special value, if any, to the purposes of the trust. What is that even talking about?
Are we meeting the trust's mission, the trust's objectives?
Okay.
Your next question's how to measure it.
Way more simple than I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, clearly, if that's what it is, we're not.
We could, I think that was some verbiage probably that just.
I don't know.
Just stood out there somewhere.
Since Adam's not here, we'll say.
Not our language.
Well, there were several models that were used when this was put together, so it must have been one that, but generally speaking, when I was looking at nonprofit trusts and such, they had a language, that came from somewhere and it's more or less saying, now that you've looked at everything else, are you still able to accomplish the mission of the trust?
Okay.
And maybe we should just restate it that way.
If declared, that, that's really unusual since, that's special relation, you know, plus.
It looks like a lawyer wrote that.
I was, the thing that concerned me about it was the special value part, actually. I mean, you know, I just, I didn't know if there was some way we were supposed to be putting value into our, into our decisions based on some relationship to the trust. I mean, I, so I'm good with it. If we can make it more simple, that'd be great. If that's all it means legally, then okay with me, too.
We'll restate it as, yeah.
To the mission of the trust. What about that?
Fulfilling the mission of the trust, yeah. We'll find some language in there.
Okay.
It's so ambiguous, it's perfect.
Benchmark you're going to always hit.
It's an attorney's sentence. No offense.
Again, a lot of discussion here, just clarifying advisor versus board versus the investment managers. The, probably, I think the next section is coming up. Don't want to get too ahead of this. I did want to, I went through the other documents and listed out anything quantitative that was stated elsewhere that I thought might be a good idea to bring into this policy. And so it's no more than 75% in bonds. Some of these are pretty broad, no more than 75% in stocks, no more than 10% in equity or fixed income options, no more than 15% international securities, and then no more than 40% basically in real assets and private assets. So the real estate, the infrastructure, the private equity, the private debt. And for those, with, the only one that we really had a conversation about internally as we went through this and went through portfolio construction was the 15% international. We constructed the initial portfolio based off of that, that limitation. It's something that if we have, in future years, if we have latitude or you want to have that conversation, we will absolutely, you know, be in compliance with it through the course of the year. That's the only one that we really had a conversation about during the asset allocation construction.
That was one of my questions that I, you know, one of my notes. I'm generally way lean domestic versus international. I'm a little concerned that the, that if we include stocks, bonds, and other securities, all those into that category of not exceeding 15%, that we're going to, we're going to have to worry about bumping up against that fairly often. I mean, if you're asking like where should, you know, if our, if our maximum is 20, I'm not saying I want to be at 20 this year, I just wonder if our maximum shouldn't be 20 rather than just 15, just to give us a little more latitude, a little more flexibility of not having to change this so often every time they come to us and kind of say, hey, look, we think we ought to be at 16 instead of 13 or whatever, because the number's going to be pretty close to 15, I would assume, a lot of times. Is that, is that right?
That's accurate. We have the international equity at 10%. Part of the infrastructure we know is global. And frankly, as we construct it, we're going to have to go through every mutual fund and every portfolio and see if they have, see what, see if they have it international and then put it in the calculation. So our initial was going to be under 15%, but we're going to be tight to that. And so 20% with understanding that 15 is really the goal would provide us more latitude.
I think that would probably be the smarter way to do it, just, just in my opinion, even though I don't, am not a fan of doing the 20%.
Gives you more flexibility.
It just gives us flexibility, because you're going to have to reach into what the private equity potentially folks are doing. I mean, it's, it's all, everything will count towards that, which might make it tough. And I assume, we can change this investment policy intra-year, right? I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to wait till the January meeting or whatever. Is that generally right?
Right.
Is that right? Yeah. I mean, I'm just kind of saying if something really extraordinary happens and we decide we really, really need 30% in international quickly, I think we can do that. It's just as a matter of, I don't think we need that right now, but I think we can in case, in case we need to. For now, I would say we want to make that more like 20, for just a little more latitude.
Tim, to tag on to Rick's question again, if we do increase it to 20%, you guys decide to invest in that direction, or 30, as you may have mentioned, you guys assess the risk of investing internationally, of course. Do you think that would significantly increase the risk of this portfolio or just depends on geopolitical climate or what are you taking under consideration?
It will, it does add risk. Correct. Because of the geopolitical, you, the idea behind investing internationally has for a long time been diversification. And you're going to get, you're going to get additional diversification, which lowers overall portfolio risk. That diversification, that isn't what it used to be. Correlations are higher than they used to be. So the advantages of investing internationally aren't as great as they were 10, 15, 20 years ago. The markets are more correlated to each other now. So no, we didn't, when we put together the, the asset allocation, to have the 10% designated to international felt right to us. Felt like the right amount to get that diversification without overweight, overweighting it. It was the, more the challenge of if the bond portfolio invests in a couple, you know, in the mutual fund outside the U.S., and then the value-add bond manager does a couple percent, then the infrastructure does a little bit, your private equity does a little bit, do all of a sudden we creep up to that 15? So it really wouldn't be by, if you raised it to 20, it wouldn't be by, we wouldn't, we wouldn't change what we're doing. You would still be somewhere in the, we think, 13 to 13.5% range. It would just have latitude. So if international stocks take off this year and naturally that that allocation goes up, we don't have to worry about being out of compliance on a short-term basis, not because of any tactical decision, just because that's where the market took you that year.
So would you all be more comfortable with 20%?
I would be. And again, with the understanding, we're not going to change what we're doing, we're just going to have a little latitude.
Depending, depending on where those foreign equities are, the vehicle they're in, you may not have the ability to rebalance on a quarterly basis to get that back within 15 that quickly.
Well, initially, the international equities are with Fidelity in a mutual fund, so we would be able to.
But I was thinking more in the, the private.
Private equity, yeah. If private equity or the infrastructure would be a good one, if they bought something that changed the weightings and all of a sudden we got over, we would have to make the difference in the allocation probably in the equity side. Correct, to bring the total down. And that's where, again, the change from 15 to 20 would help out because then we wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already had to figure out how to build out some spreadsheets to figure out how to track this. This is a little unique.
We need to remember, if we, if everybody's on board with that, and I don't want to go to, I mean, we can make, when we make the motion to approve the investment policy statement, we can make it with that specific change. You've just got to make sure we remember that. But I don't want to do, you know, somebody makes a motion, everybody's cool with that, everybody okay with the 20.
Thank you for that. That will make my committee happier.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know if we know the assets, it's just a complicated matter to you more. I don't think there's anything prohibiting us from going to 20% as I think it is.
The last piece, which may be better to look at in your document, because this is my formatted, not clean version, is Exhibit A. That's where we took the asset allocation that we talked about at the meeting, that's in that asset allocation study, and put in the specific into the exhibit. So you now know the asset classes that'll be utilized. And again, we'll update this each year. So if we bring in a new asset class, we'll update the investment policy accordingly. But you have a policy target for each, you have a range then within the policy that we are to manage the portfolio within in each asset. So you're, we are not going to come in one day, you're going to be 10% overweight equities or 10% under in bonds. We want to stay within a range. We believe that's our responsibility. And then the specific benchmarks that we're going to use in our reporting. So again, for each one of these, you'll see the manager and their returns, and then underneath you'll see the benchmark and its returns, and then a peer group and the rankings. So you'll be able to judge visually very quickly how the managers are doing. This is the, this is the piece that will probably change the most just from one year to the next, as we, as the portfolio grows over time. We'll look each year, when we run an asset allocation study, and say, is there another asset class we want to bring in as this goes from 50 to 100 to 200 million? You know, do we want to expand that? We'll do that in asset allocation study, put it in a policy, and then bring it for your review.
What other questions do we have for Tim regarding, I believe we've covered both agenda items four and five, kind of here, it looks like, consideration of asset allocation and adoption of investment policy? Anybody have any more questions about policies that have been put together? Hearing none. Can I get a motion with the considerations of a few slight modifications, including language regarding special relationship, incorporating the mission of the trust in that language, and modifying the considerations in managing investment portfolio? Section A, number eight, nope, that was a mission. And then the second one, excuse me, is Asset Allocation 5.4, Item C, increasing that allowance from 15 to 20%.
So a little background on that. So the trust agreement requires the trust to invest generally consistent with TCRS's requirements. So the 15% actually comes from the TCRS guidelines, which limits them to 15%. You know, 20% generally consistent, seems like it would be, given the nature of things, a 5% change, so. I think we're fine going to 20%, but I wanted to give the board a background as to where that 50% came from.
Yeah, I should have brought that up, because that's what I was thinking when I asked that question, correct? Okay. So I'll try to restate my motion.
I think it's all right. I think it's all right.
All right.
I'll just kind of say so moved.
There you go.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional questions? All who approve, please respond by saying aye. Those who oppose? Okay, we have adopted the investment policy and asset allocation structure, those two additional considerations. Up next on the agenda is Item Number Six, Consideration of Investment Implementation Schedule, Attachment Three. Certain I know exactly where they said in my packet here.
Sorry, I made it landscape and spread it out like that.
It's in the front.
Generally with OCI relationships, once you approve the investment policy, we go back and do the work, because now you've given us the authority between the contract and the policy, frankly, to make these decisions and do this. As I've mentioned way too many times, I like being transparent and get input on what we're doing. So this is the initial list of managers. We went through the, the committee has gone through its process over the last four weeks or so, of looking at the asset allocation study that was generated, looking at the investment policy, and then saying, how do we want to bring this out initially, want to actually make the investments? So I just put together this brief spreadsheet, just again, for kind of conversation, and love to get your input and answer any questions. So the asset classes are on the left-hand side, so there's 12, and those line up, these numbers do line up with what's in the investment policy itself. The investment managers that we have tentatively approved, this will go through next week for final approval internally at Marquette, that's why input is welcome. The investment managers we plan to use, the benchmarks, which again are in your investment policy, target allocations that are in your investment policy. We base this off of 52 million. Once we set up the custodial relationship and move those assets over, then we'll look at a current market value, adjust these, the numbers, the total, and adjust these numbers accordingly, but we use 52 million as the base. And then show due, under February, March, and April, how we want a dollar-cost average into some of these investments over a three-month period. This is where we had the most conversation, because it's volatile. Do you want to really do this all at once? Do you want to put 23, 24 million dollars in the stock market all at once? That didn't, doesn't feel appropriate. Do you want to spread it out over a whole year? Well, that seems too extreme, because then you're losing equities beta over the course of the year. So our initial thought is to do this over three months. That's what's set up in the system right now. So most everything by the end of April, with just a couple of exceptions, everything will be invested. The two exceptions are the private debt, which in conversations with them, they're going to take half the money at the end of April and then wait on the other half. So we just put that other 1.3 million up into bonds. These are my really high-level Excel, you know, skills here, showing boxes. But that's the box for the 1.3, and the box for the 1.3 at the top going into bonds. That's the map mirror of those two numbers. And then the infrastructure, J.P. Morgan has given us indication that they're in the midst of a purchase and will probably be drawing money in the second quarter, potentially third quarter, so I put that in July. That money would remain in cash. You can see it's starting at 32 million and working its way down. Much easier to do now with cash, you know, earning 5.5%. So that would be held at the custodian in a money market fund, and then drawn as we need to, to make the investments. So by the end of, really, by summer, with the exception of a little bit with Gollub and private debt, you know, 96, 97% of this thing would be invested. Then just again, to go back, I put in what the fees are for each of these individual investments, vehicles, and what their annualized fee, it came down to 39 basis points. I boxed out 47, because that's what I said in the finals pitch. So wanted to let you know that I actually, it's Consulting 101, you know, under promise, over deliver. So when we had originally looked at it, we had thought it was going to be in the mid-40s, so I had used 47 in the document. But it, this initial allocation, because a lot of the equities are indexed early on, comes in at 39. So comes in fairly less. That, fees will be in every report, so you'll be able to track this over time as well. Last thing, fees will probably go up a little bit over time, as you do a little bit more in the privates, a little bit more in the alternatives, a little bit more in active management. But for an initial setup, we wanted to use a lot of index funds to get that broad exposure inexpensively, and kind of get that, get that market exposure without taking on a lot of manager risk early on. So we're using more indexing than we might in the long term.
Rick?
I knew you would.
You showing one spreadsheet.
All right, so look, honestly, listen, I was saving this, everybody on the crease, everybody knows where I'm coming from. I mean, this is their deal, and I want it to be, I'm going to, I'll ask questions on this stuff, but I mean, I don't want to be guiding all this by any stretch, so. But I do, the high-yield number probably gives me a little bit of heartburn, just being that high. I mean, almost half of our bond exposure is in high yields.
It's a Shankman four points, so it's high yield, bank loans, convertibles, and there's a sleeve of private. So we're using Shankman specifically, we're using this vehicle so we can get some broad exposure, correct? It's all below investment grade, but it's not all high yield.
So my, kind of my only, my, the heartburn part of this, so I got two things that are the heartburn for me here, and I'll have a little different angle on this that's coming from not just what I do for a living, but also kind of my counsel background and making sure that we're, from our group's standpoint, as well as the current counsel's standpoint. So like, the dollar-cost averaging piece of this is the other part that gives me a little, you know, the three times. You know, for me, extending it out to four, five, or six months, there's a reason why that makes sense to me that it might not make sense to someone who's looking at this from the outside. Because the last thing that anybody wants to see happen is the extreme of what you're talking about, sticking $24 million in the stock market, and two months later it's worth 16 million, right? I mean, you know, the newspaper will write about it, okay? I mean, that's just, period, that's the way that's going to happen. And so I would err towards, again, I don't have anything to do with it now, but for their sake and the people's sake who did put this together, which does include me, I'd probably err towards maybe stretching that out a little bit longer rather than a little bit shorter. That's just my opinion on it. Has nothing to do with what I think's going to happen to the market or the election or any of that, it's just stretching that out a little bit. And it does have a little bit to do with the fact that we're probably going to be able to earn a little bit of money on our cash while it's sitting there, right? It's not like it's sitting there earning .2 or 3. So I would stretch that a little bit. And then just the idea, to me, in the world of below credit grade, below bank, investment grade credit, particularly for this money, I would want that number to, I just think that number needs to be lower, because it's one of the scenarios where at least we do have now, rates are a little bit higher, there's at least some idea that bonds may do okay when stocks don't the next time. When rates are zero, you can't get any appreciation on the bond side when your stocks go down. I mean, you can't get any help from the diversification. At least now you can. But it looks to me like about the last four times the stock market's gone down, the correlation that you're talking about with international, the correlation has clearly been there in that category right there with stocks. And so we're going to have a much, you know, a much higher correlation to stocks with the high-yield bond benchmark bonds. And to me, I just think we're already kind of cutting that number a little bit short. I would want to make sure that our bonds are pretty quality bonds. That's just my kind of opinion on it. I think high yield serves its purpose, and you know, that below credit, below investment grade serves its purpose. I just think it, particularly as we're getting started.
We do walk into that a little slower.
Yeah, I think it should be less, and it's not because I've got any crystal balls, I promise, I don't mean any of that. I just, I just know that if we run into some, whether, whatever the issue is in the near term, and stocks go down, that 10% is not going to buoy us likely. Right? I mean, it's, you're going to see those types of investments get beat up pretty badly if it does what it's been doing for the last four times the market's gone down. So that'd just be my kind of idea on it, you know, this is what this committee's for. If you guys say, no, we're going to go with what he suggested, I'm cool with it. I'm not, I'm not, my feelings aren't hurt about that at all, it's just my opinion on it.
I'll state my opinion. I'll start with, I appreciate your input, because this is what you do. Absolutely. I lean on you for insight like this. And I am wholeheartedly supportive, especially of the dollar-cost averaging, investing, spreading it out. I do generally, I'm not disagreeing, but I do generally have some challenge or concern over, are we going to micromanage the person we're hiring's investment strategy every time we look at it, right? And I hear you, and I want to hear Tim's input as well.
I'm saying the same thing, honestly.
I mean, we have hired a professional to do this, and what I don't want to do is undermine him and then us basically try to manage his portfolio underneath him. And, but I hear you, and I agree with you, and I would have that same concern as well. But I'm trying to say, let's trust.
Me, too, man.
The manager we've hired.
That's what I said, that's what I said.
That's just my opinion.
I don't want to be micromanaging it either.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure I get my opinion out there, and there are a couple of different reasons for it. And man, if you just say, look, Rick, I hear what you're saying, but we really need to stick with this, I'll sleep pretty well tonight.
And let's face it, we're just beginning with Tim. We're just getting to know each other, and so for you to understand how some of us think, it's, that's only good.
Nope, that's, that's what I asked for.
I asked for this. And Rick's very consistent. He mentioned this at the last meeting as well, about being a bit defensive walking into this and not having that initial big dip. So while, yeah, yes, Marquette, we have the responsibility to make the decisions, but if I'm hearing, lean toward being a little bit more defensive in the implementation, we'll adjust it in the benchmarks and everything, so everything will look clean, but it'll be accurate in stating what we're doing. But if the tone of what I'm hearing is be a little bit more defensive in implementation, because we don't want to have a large initial drop, we want to stay a little more protected in this investment phase, I could absolutely take that back and talk to the group and see how we want to do it. And again, a lot of it is where markets are, and markets are already volatile this year. The headline is very good, that Nasdaq hit a new high today. Small caps are down 5%. Emerging market debt's down 5%. Bonds are down 1% and 1/2 already this month.
And the world's on fire.
Yes. So if you, if what I'm hearing is the tone is lean, lean to be more defensive versus more aggressive, I can absolutely take that back to the committee when we walk through this next week and see if we want to make adjustments accordingly. So this is.
And then to follow up with that, the obvious question is going to be, if we're changing the model, are we still looking at the 7.5% yield? I mean, high yield's there for a reason. I'm not arguing, I'm just observing.
7.5 is a longer-term target, and correct. We need to get the money to work in order to make that happen, but math in this is pretty easy. If you go down 10% initially, it's a lot harder to make 7% over time. It's a lot easier when you're starting at 5 to build up to 7 and 1/2. So it tells us to be a little bit more defensive with the initial allocation, which is why we started to branch this out over multiple months, instead of getting the money, dumping it in the market, seeing what happened.
Very good discussion, very good points, both sides, and I agree. Do we need to, Craig, are we required to vote on his implementation schedule?
His implementation schedule? I think providing direction is probably the best thing, so I think you've got a pretty good feel for what the consensus is.
Are you guys okay kind of with this idea, unless, instead of me being more specific on the high yield and that sort of thing, are you guys kind of okay with this idea of a little bit more defensive posture over these first six months? I mean, one of the cool things about this is that once we get a little time under our belt, two or three or four years, much of those things just go away naturally, right? I mean, we have a natural dollar-cost average built into this thing with the new money that's going to come in every year, which is really great. I mean, that is a big, big, big deal. It's just not going to be, that's not going to materialize for three or four years of getting new contributions in.
But it does actually, and I, we have needed to adjust this spreadsheet to meet.
But it does actually, and I, we have needed just a spreadsheet to meet it soon because you are getting money in July.
Right.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Full, that soon, we're getting our next one is July?
July 1st.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Nice. Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
Seventeen, about 17-3, 17-2-9.
I think 10 of it.
Oh, yeah, then 10's out, so...
Part of it comes out for the parks and the roads, or is that...
Yeah, I don't remember the allocation, it sure goes down every year, so...
I think next year's is still around 10 million.
Okay. So about 7 million. Oh, 10 million is the trust. Okay. So 7 million city card down.
I would, I would enter, from a direction standpoint, I would entertain if, if Tim goes back to his group and they say, we can do it over four, or five, or six months, I'm okay with that, right? But if he goes back and says, you know, we really think three months, four months as presented is the plan that's optimal, knowing that there's, we've got another dollar-cost average to consider in July.
Yeah.
I'm also okay with that as well.
That helps. I was thinking it was January, so that certainly helps, and I, of course, it is, if you do this over three months, just thinking about this, you're gonna be putting about 16 or 17 million in a month. Really, it's, a three-times dollar-cost average is really over two months. You've got a now, after one month, and after two months, 17, you know, 16 and 1/2 million bucks a pop. And then we'll have a, how much in July, do we think, about 10?
10.
This is in the asset allocation study that was provided, the years down at the bottom are how much comes in July 1st of each year.
That'll be close, yeah, I mean, if, I think if you get it to four times, that would be great.
If we spread it out until July, because we'll have to do it, 10 million in July, and then I can use that money actually for JP Morgan and some of those, that actually might...
Be nice, yeah.
Make it somewhat easier for us, having the inflow.
Okay.
Good.
They could time out really well, couldn't they?
Yep.
Just by the way, in our, the asset allocation study that was included, where we looked at the 7 and 1/2%, we did, Craig provided us the spreadsheet with the cash flows, so we did incorporate that in. So, the bar at the top is what were the net cash flows. So if you're taking out 5% a year on April 1st, and you're putting in the dollars at the bottom, that, these are what the net cash flow's in, again, based on, based on our assumptions of what the portfolio's gonna generate, except, all of these numbers, none of these numbers are gonna be right, but this is the general flow of what we're anticipating for it over time. So I thought this might be mildly interesting from a graphical standpoint. And then the other, in Craig's spreadsheet, the, when I modified the number from 5% to 7 and 1/2, his expected market value for the portfolio was about 235 million, ours is about 230. So if you've utilized that spreadsheet historically and wanted a long-term view of what the portfolio, or anticipating net of cash flows the portfolio to be in 10 years, 230 is the number. With a wild, obviously, range of anywhere between 150 and 330, welcome, you know, to the markets. But, we run this 1,000 times, and the 50th percentile's there at 230, which again lined up pretty close to what Craig had on the spreadsheet that he provided to us.
And this is, this is calculated on a net distribution growth, is it, is it discounted for inflation as well?
Yes, it's, it has the, no, it is not, it's nominal, so we're using the 7 and 1/2% rate of return, so the inflation's built into part of that.
I got you, I got you.
Any additional questions for Tim regarding asset allocation, cash flow? Tim, we certainly do appreciate that presentation, your consideration, and for doing some additional research and taking a look at that with the team. And, I suppose we gotta take a vote on approving his implementation schedule that he proposes, or do we need to approve it next month when he comes back with a modified recommendation?
I don't even think we, do we even need action on that?
I don't think it has to be action because I think it's, we can do like we do often with council, just give us direction on where we're gonna go. I mean, he's got the authority to make the, he's not gonna exercise the authority outside of the direction that, given by the board, so.
So give him direction.
I think we're good with the discussion, and I, I think, I think we take, in the future, just so you know, I think we take a vote if there didn't feel like there was a consensus and we really had some, some discussions that were on opposite ends of the, then we'd probably want to take a vote, but I think we have consensus on what we want to do. Do you, do you agree, Tim, do you feel that way?
I agree.
Okay.
Me too, I agree. Okay. Moving along to agenda item number seven, other business, there any other business we want to discuss today?
Couple of things, you have in the front part of your notebooks, you have a financial report as of the end of the year, December 31st. So we gathered those numbers, and the next page shows the distribution calculation that was provided to the trust committee, the committee on contributions. They met yesterday after having reviewed all their applications and decided on the recommendation they want to make to the board, and you'll, you have that in your notebook as well, it's the larger sheet that you can pull out, you'll see the list of organizations' projects that they applied for, and the requests. Just to remind you, you had, we're working off a total amount that they can distribute, and there were limitations on certain categories of nonprofits, and so we, they worked sort of in a matrix to get, get everything balanced out. And so the numbers that are in front of you balance, and we can do a couple of different things. If this board's comfortable, you'll recognize most of the names on there, nothing on there is probably too far off base. If the board's comfortable with what you see here, we can take this to the council. If you recall, the council will take a look at it, and they have a thumbs up, thumbs down, vote as to whether they want to pull anything off that. I don't anticipate that they would this year, just based on who's been granted the money. And then, and then staff will take, go forward and do the distributions in July. Or if the, if the board would like to spend a little time, take a harder look at it, if they have any questions and information, we can give it to you in our next meeting, we can, we can approve that. The real deadline on that was for the committee to get to the board their recommendations by the 15th of February, so obviously they've made that, this is their recommendation. And then, we anticipate wanting to get it to council sometime either late February, early March, and then we can inform the nonprofits on what, what the grants are gonna be, and then have council approve that, or not council approve that, have, have those distributions in start to be made in, in July. So it's a choice of the board whether they want to go ahead and prove what's shown here from the recommendations of the committee, or if we want to table this to our next meeting sometime in February. We'll need to have a meeting in February, if we do that, then we can, we can table it.
Can I ask you a big-picture question?
Sure.
This kind of curiosity, from that number, the $364,000, that's the amount that's gonna go out to them? And this is for everybody's good, but kind of, in my mind, I think I remember what that number was a couple of years ago, you know, what did we, what was our normal number that we gave, was it...
When you subtract the ones that are governmental, or that will be included in another way...
Yeah.
The number that was from, I think, two years ago was around 285,000, so this is significantly more. Last year, there were some inconsistencies to that because of a, of some special, the Child Advocacy Center, because of their move, had some pieces that altered those numbers a bit, but we're working through that as well. But, but it was this number, it's significantly more money and more agencies being selected as well.
So, just for everybody's, kind of, just, I don't know, for everybody's knowledge on this, you know, one of the things that, that I wanted everybody to know that, I couldn't remember for sure, I thought it was 200 and something, but I, so I thought it was going up, but I couldn't remember by how much. You know, this is the first year, this first year we're doing this, and we've been able to increase what normally would have come from the city, about 280 to 360, so that's a cool thing. One thing I'm worried about is gonna happen, is that all that we're gonna hear about, and I mentioned this maybe a meeting or two ago, is, you know, well, what I see at the, you know, wherever, at the pickleball court, it's, we asked for 50,000 and we only got 19, you know, that's, that's the kind of stuff that you generally, you get kind of hit with, but the reality of what's going on here is, you know, there are, there are things that are in place to, to keep any one person, you know, any one group from getting too much, and any one area to get too much, and all that stuff was done by the council, which is great, and it looks like they came up with the matrix to figure all that out, which is awesome. But the reality is, this thing's gone up by 20% or so in the very first year.
I've made a lot of grant requests in micro, I've never gotten what I asked for. Never, I've never gotten 100% of a single one.
You hear the same thing every year, and I will say that the committee spent a lot of time going through applications this year because they weren't, you know, next year will be easier because it'll be the same people and they'll be more familiar with them. And then Karen and Angela spent a whole lot of time with them, putting together the software so they could do it efficiently, and then giving a lot of the input that we've experienced over the past, make sure that they not, probably weren't gonna get all they asked for because they always ask for more than they're gonna get, as I'm saying, knows how that world works.
I'm sure that's all happened already, but I'm telling you guys, everybody here, for just that purpose, and, and you know, there was this, there has been this kind of notion floating around that, oh, hey, there's all this money out here, there's this new way for us to go, you know, to go access money, so we're gonna ask for what we think is, you know, we hear there's millions of dollars sitting out there, and we need to, we're gonna go ask for these big numbers. So, you know, it's just, we're still probably in the break check stage of this, everybody gonna go, all right, hold on a minute now, this, you know, it's not exactly how it works, here's how it works, and I'm just, that's why I wanted to kind of mention it to everybody.
But you know, also, I think, a talking point that I use often is just that, you know, your grant application was fantastic, but there are so many people making requests, and in an effort to be fair and to spread the money around, what I love about what I'm looking at is that there's several grants supporting operating expenses. A lot of foundations do not fund operating expenses. This is fantastic, that this is another area, because the programs cannot happen without the people, the staff. So I, I know every organization on this sheet except the very last one.
And just FYI, it's smaller potatoes, of course, but since 2018 Community Foundation for Rutherford County, we've given to every one of these. And I guarantee you, we gave 52,000 in grants last November for some of these very same projects. So, again, they're applying...
Yeah.
Wherever they can to piece it together, and I go back to, I said, it's rare, I mean, if you've got a special relationship, and I know, again, Chris Tusing is large for capital campaigns, but when you're talking about operational enhancements, you're going to a lot of different places asking for money to piece it together, and I think frankly is...
And before, no one's...
Naive to assume you're gonna ask for $60,000...
And get it.
And get it from one single entity, especially when that would be 20% of what's been given away.
Yeah. Karen and Angela did a good job, I think, managing expectations to who's out there so that they didn't over-ask, because they think there's millions out there. And then we talked, I did talk to the committee, and I'll tell the board as well, is that this year didn't include a lot of the fees that will be incorporated into the whole trust scheme, and so, you know, projections are, depending on investment return, no pressure, Tim, that the number may go down next year before it goes back up, and that, you know, over the years, it will become a substantial amount that'll be given out.
Can I ask some naive questions and youth experiences? Are these, are these the same names that you were typically seeing on city council when most of the city was doing this?
Most of them.
And I had that question, you know, I actually went through and calculated a ballpark percentage of who's getting what, and primary care's getting 100%, and the other two, health cares are getting 50% and 40%, and that's gonna be the question to get asked. Well, I saw primary care getting 100%, we only got 40%. So, I, I'm, much like my point with Tim earlier, we have a committee, council, a group of individuals that, that goes through and makes the motion and presents it to us, so I have to trust that they have done a ton of work on this and brought this to us as their recommendation. So, I know we're looking for, you know, we're, we're on the investment fund management distribution side of this, but I'll ask you, Craig, outside of, you know, looking for outliers and things that, that may stand out that's of concern, refresh my memory as to what I specifically should be looking for in this list that I'm not looking for.
The requirements were, you know, nonprofit, obviously, that it was something that the city traditionally would fund, and so that incorporates a lot of things that we legally couldn't fund, for they have to, they have to be a year-round operation, it can't be just a one-time situation, because legally, the city could not fund that from, from their allocations toward nonprofits. And there were a few other things. There were, there were some applicants that did not qualify, that had to be thrown out. I don't remember the numbers now, but it seemed like there was maybe a million and two, something like that, of total applications, and what the committee did is they went through and they, they scored them all, they voted yes or no to fund them, we dropped out the ones that got the most, no votes, kind of allocated by scoring a bit, and then what we had to do is to take that number and start to put them into the different categories that they fit in, because that's where the limitations ran to. And at the end of the day, yesterday, the committee came together and they had to make cuts, because a couple of the, the total amount was over and a couple of the categories were over. And what they did is they said, let's just do a weighted average, but no more than the maximum. So, in allocating the cuts on a weighted average basis, we're allocating what was still a capacity they had in that one category on a, on a weighted average basis, one applicant did hit their max, just by doing the math and the numbers. So it was, it was much, at that point, it gets much less subjective, it's much more objective, it's just math. And the way, the way it worked out was, yeah, you got 100% for somebody, but it wasn't because we were not as enticed by the application from the other two healthcare providers, it was just the math that it worked out and what category they fit into.
Specifically for this group, are there things that we need to be digging into on this documentation...
Right.
That, that I'm not aware of? I just want to make sure I'm doing what is expected of me when it comes to this.
I think, I think if, if the committee had a lot more difficulty in how they went about their process, though there was a lot of disagreements among the committees, I would say yes. There was an amazing amount of kind of consistency throughout the entire process, which they did individually. So they, with the software, allowed them to individually go in and review the applications and score it and go through the entire process. So you had, how many, seven? Seven committee members that did it all individually, and they were very, very close. So, that tells me probably that, from an oversight standpoint, because it is, you're actually ultimately, under the trust agreement, it's your decision on who's getting funded, I would say, you know, you allowed the committee to do their work, they did it good, they didn't have any kind of disagreements, which they may someday have when the money gets a lot bigger. So I don't know if there's any more that the board itself could do, although you certainly have the authority to do more if you needed to.
Yeah, when I, when I saw this, it's very thorough and the matrix and everything, I mean, I'm not in the business of rubber-stamping things, but...
Right.
This looks very...
So well done, yeah.
Yeah. I think if, if we as staff got any sense that something needed to be taken a harder look at, we would have alerted the board to that, and I think we're, we, I don't want to speak for these guys, but they, because they did, they did all the work, it sounds like I did much more than I did. But I think that they were pretty comfortable with the process, committee's discussions, who applied, I mean, we all have our opinions on, on different organizations having to work with some, but, but I think, I think pretty comfortable with this recommendation from a staff level to the board.
I'll add, if I can, if you would like to take the time to go back and see what the specific guidelines are, what the committee went through to get to the point of establishing the application, what the application, you know, kind of how some of that flowed, to see the work that went into it, just, just to... the work that went into it. Just, just to review, we'd be happy to go through, you know, with you and just kinda show you some of that back, back work to catch you up on it. But it was, it was very well done. Very, the professionalism that went into it, the, the things that this board did, did approve with Ms. Davis's advice, helping Karen and I know how to seek professional guidance and training through philanthropy southeast and some of those pieces, the connections with the Founder's Software, the, the work that we were able to put into, to that process to set that committee up for success was very helpful in helping guide it to make it where they could score individually. They could go through the applicant, the applications asked the questions that, that we had wanted to see, that matched the, the guidelines, that matched the trust piece that came into play. And so it was, it was a good effort at getting the right questions so that when they were going through and reviewing and scoring, they spent a lot of time on, on those applications that came through for sure. And it showed in, in how carefully they scored in the notes that were taken, in the, in the process itself. And the fact that it did, Mr. Lynch that was on the committee, he made a comment of that, just from that, you know, kind of that engineering mindset of where the, where the curve comes in, of how consistent the scoring really was, did, like, like Mr. Tindall mentioned, did reinforce what it looks like to, to give you that confidence that there's not a lot of outliers, that there's not a lot of conflict, that there's a really good base in a competitive process. The nonprofits knew that they were entering a competitive scoring system. And I think that's one of the advantages that, that the council had set up was to try to change it from a, a more political ask and make it a more competitive, carefully reviewed by appropriate committees through those processes. And, and I was very pleased with, with this first piece of what that looks like. I, I think it was extremely successful.
You're to be applauded, Angela and Karen. It's a, well, I'm saying both of you because the Founder takes a lot of training for all of your committee to be able to acclimate to that online evaluation process. That's just really fantastic. And I think people are so much more honest when they're by themselves in the privacy of their own space going through an evaluation rather than a lot of, you know, public talking in a meeting where people could become contentious or territorial about the ones they like the best.
Sure. And I'll say this as well. On the city website, if, if you want to just go and take a look, you can see the, you know, of course, the application isn't active right now, but the information, just that overview piece is there after this is approved at this level and at council level. You know, to be able to just be very transparent about that process and about this system as far as the awards is something that we, we've been working with our webmaster on, on preparing for that level as well. But you can go to the city website right now and see those guidelines and look at where those restrictions and pieces bring you. I think it, it kinda helps in some of those conversations when, when the information is announced, when the nonprofits are announced, when the, as that comes together. There, there's a lot of good justification that's already in place on, on how the decision got to this point.
Mr. Flot?
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna, first of all, I applaud what they're doing and, and I agree with Richard about not rubber stamping. On the other hand, they're putting in scores of hours and, you know, they were set up this way so that we would trust them to do their job and, and that we would then bless that. To me, what might kick something out is if the, very remotely, you saw something in here that you thought was antithetical to what the city is wanting to get accomplished or that maybe we have personal discomfort with, highly unlikely. Or the other thing might be that, you know, is it out of balance? You know, is, is you get more money? Are you waiting more toward, you know, education or so? And that's a judgment call that we may have to deal with when we get into big money. Now, that leads me to a question that maybe everybody else understands. I see over here in the summary, the limit for those top three. How is that limit set? And obviously, we've hit the limit in all three of those categories. And then there's this bigger pile of other. And, and I'm not, I don't have a concern, but I wanna understand that. I don't know if that limit is set by the council?
It's set in the trust agreement. It's a percentage. It's not a number. It's a percentage of the distribution that we made every year goes to those three categories. And I'll be honest with you, one of the things that we work pretty hard on is what category do they fit in? Because some don't always fit in the same category.
There are organizations that can hit all three of those categories.
Well, and so they probably...
And that's the other question I would have is, you know, can you gerrymander this thing to where you're, you know, I mean, are they, and I'm trusting the committee's doing a good job with this. But to me, that's, that could be slippery.
Yeah. And, and we as staff level, we're watching that pretty close because we obviously don't wanna run afoul of the trust agreement. So, and, and there's a couple of different, it's not just the organization itself, but it's the program that we're funding.
Exactly. Sure, sure.
You know, so both the program that we're funding would fit into the category or the organization itself. And so it, it's pretty, it can be subjective, admittedly. Some are clear cut, some don't have any issues. And then there's some that you just have to say, well, it sounds like mostly what they're doing is something that, for example, is not one of these three categories. And that's the program we're funding. And they would go in the other, because you'll notice the other doesn't have a limitation on it. That's, that picks up everything else. But here...
I, I hear what you're, I'm sorry, Craig. Go ahead.
I was gonna say that the numbers work out because what the committee decided to do was to take the adjustments that need to be made and just distribute them on a weighted average across all of them. And so that's why we were able to get to a dollar amount. It may be in some years, in, you know, if the dollar amount is 55,260, you might be at 53,000, you know, something. Just be, you know, you have a limit. You can go below it. And that just might be how we fund some things in the future.
I appreciate that explanation. And going back to something Rick was saying earlier about perception, not just from the public, but from the council, one of the things, you know, we're really fiduciary responsibility here. And I like having that column that says, we've weighed these. And again, there's some subjectivity. And here was our limit. And we got to the limit on each of these three. It gives us some cover, frankly, because I, I don't want us to, to bless something or approve something that is out of, you know, that, that goes against the charter of this thing and do that ignorantly, totally ignorantly. So I'm glad, no, the staff's involved heavily with that, working with the allocations committee, doing their job very well. So that, that's, anyway, I'll shut up now. That, that's reassuring to me.
This is really important, though, what you're saying, actually. I mean, you know, 'cause, 'cause when you, when you explain kinda what they've done to get to this point, you've already kicked people out that didn't match up to the category of something that we would have traditionally done. I mean, all that stuff happened. From a, from a cover standpoint, from a, from a clarity standpoint, from whatever standpoint you wanna call it. I mean, that might be something that's part of a report in the future. Again, I'm 100%, I think we ought to vote on this tonight and get it knocked out. Just, that's my opinion on it. But...
I agree.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with all this. You know, from a, this is the first time. So we gotta kinda think through, hey, how can we improve this, make this smoother over the years? You know, one of the things, just thinking about him mentioning the, the column over here on the right-hand side, is, you know, some, some little checklist. And what, and look, it may not be you guys doing this forever, right? I, I don't know. It may be us, you know, it might be some staff, some other staff that we pay for out here. I, I don't know how that works some years down the road when this thing gets bigger. But somehow or another, there needs to be some little checklist for us to say, like, you went through that little list of things that we're supposed to be doing on our fiduciary responsibility, right? That it's traditionally something that the city would do, it's this, the percentages, that there's some little checklist that we get, that's something that says, yeah, somebody went through here and kicked out all the people, check. We didn't, we've got the, the maximum numbers here. Check, check, check. You know, it's something that we can look at just to make sure that all that stuff has happened so that we're not, like he said, completely ignorantly thinking it's kind of already been done by someone else out there. But we're the ones that have the authority and the responsibility to bless it ultimately. So we do need to make sure it's done.
I think, I think a report's a, a good idea. And, you know, if, if the board's comfortable with doing this, I think we'd still do post hoc a, a report that covers all that even for this year. So I think that's a great idea.
You know, I, just, just to get my thoughts in here, I, I agree with kinda what Rick and, what Rick and Stephen were going and even taking Angela up on her recommendation. I think it'd be prudent and from a good due diligence standpoint. I don't know if there was a presentation put together that was presented. Is there nothing we can see visually that helps us look at how these decisions were made? Because it kinda combines with what you guys are saying. You know, we could be asked all sorts of questions about the decision that we made tonight. All I can say is I looked at a list of folks who, you know, were selected to receive money and that's what we went with.
Yeah.
And I don't know that that's gonna fly.
Yeah.
A lot of cases.
Yeah. I, I think what we'll need to do is to come back in a February meeting anyway.
Yeah.
So if the board wants to, it's, there's no, no problem with this. Board can hold off on this and we can bring it back in a February, put together a report that, that discusses all the issue. We do have a spreadsheet that has a lot more information on it, kind of accumulation of what, what all the committee has gone through. And we can distribute that and make sure that, that, that the board, board members get, get that. So you have a lot more information.
And just to be clear, I mean, I feel like the, you know, we, we put the committees in place for a reason. I'm certain they made wise decisions. And when you hear the word, well, let me not say that. When I hear the word subjective, that's when it gives me a pause. If it was completely objective, I'd be like, let's go. I'm fine with it. But when inkling of subjectivity comes into that, that's when I need to be able to say, you know, I've seen how the results were generated. I agree with them. Either this criteria was met, wouldn't, right here.
So just to add to that, I would say, you know, you, you really said it. But I mean, that, that is specifically why we did that separate committee, you know, at the, at the council level when this was all kinda just, you know, I don't wanna say dreamed up, but when it was all put together, is having that, having that completely separate from us and then us looking at it. This, this, what we used to call the big board, this was what we used to call the big board because we didn't have any better word for it. But the big board was really to just primarily look at, are the things being met? The, you know, are the check marks being checked as far as the maximums? The traditionally something that the city would do. And then there was this outlier thing out there that was really what Steve said, which is, if there's something on here that just really doesn't look like it's something that that committee said, that there is, we are that kinda last line of defense. But, you know, there's still another line of defense behind us, which is the council. Right? So, you know, like...
And even if we're asked by the council, Rick, too, you know, I mean, you know, I've, I've said on many boards where I've said in front of the right person, they were like, why'd you come up with that conclusion?
I'm, I'm for it. I'm for it. Like, I'd be okay knocking it out if we, if it helped get the money to them faster or anything. I said, I don't think it does. If it's gonna go where it goes, right?
It would be very affirming for the committee for us to go ahead and vote on this and let them know that we see the due diligence they've put in. It's the first time. Wouldn't that be affirming for us to go ahead and, I know all of these organizations, I'm thrilled when I look at this list.
I'm comfortable. I'd be comfortable knocking it out and doing it kinda ad hoc or after the fact. You know, I mean, I'd be comfortable with that this time. I'm, I'm okay either way. I mean, if we're gonna meet in February, I'm comfortable with doing that too. I don't care.
Here's, here's, here's gonna be my request. And I think about this and I think about our meeting tonight, what we're gonna do in February, if anything. More importantly, I'm thinking about this meeting in a year from now. And I think what would be best is, and, and we're, we're building this train on the tracks going down the, the tracks here. I think next year, I think it'd be beneficial to have some of that background data. One. Two, I would like to be invited to those meetings. I probably can't make all of them, but I'd like to hear some of the subjectivity that goes in the conversations and those things. And I was on the schedule for one that got canceled for weather or something like that. But I'd just like to hear that. I'd, I'd like to hear, just sit in the back, be quiet, just listen to the dialogue. And three, I think it would be beneficial, Angela, whether it's you or Karen or, or Craig or whoever the chairman of that committee is, to present this to us, to come in and just say, look, here's, here's the list. You've got the background data behind it. And here's, here's what we're trying to accomplish per our, our guidance and, and what we're commissioned to accomplish. And here's why we're doing that, just so that we can study the data, we can ask those questions. And then...
We both have a board.
I don't wanna say check the boxes, but check the boxes of the things we need to be doing for next year. All of that said, I'm good with this.
I am too. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Craig, can I, I won't beat a dead horse. So I wanna, I wanna just make sure, like, over here in the recommended, and we hit the limits on those three big areas. So the 200,000 and up, does that mean one of two things? Does that mean that all that other, they have nothing to do subjectively with community safety and victim services, health-related services, education, youth service? I mean, those are the three big pillars of social services. So it's amazing to me that well over half of what we're giving out has nothing to do with any of those.
Yeah.
That seems odd to me. I'm, I'm almost, or, or is this set up where, okay, once we hit our limit, it may touch on any of those three, but we gotta lump it now as other because we've hit our limit. And again, is that congruent with what the council or the charter has set forth? I just wanna make sure we're, we're playing by the rule. And I know you all are looking at it, but I'm, that's my, it's no misgiving. I just wanna understand it a little bit.
And, and Rick can weigh in too. The idea of the categories we had is that we weren't overfunding programs that were, had other sources of funds or, you know, we just, we didn't, education's a primary. You know, the schools could come in and ask for a lot of things, but we fund the schools already. And so, you know, that's part of our budgeting process, part of what we do. And so to, to just shift that over to the trust was probably not the right thing to do. So, so the limitation on education really kind of, I think, derived a lot from, from that area. And to make sure that other areas got taken care of because there's a lot of other organizations out, community services and, and Krista Houston that fund a lot of other things. So a lot of the thinking went into that to, to create the limitations on there. When we went through and looked at them, we weren't just shifting them down to other if they just didn't fit a category. We'd probably either limit what we were gonna give them. But if the program that they were applying for had a diverse allocation of money that might've touched on, say, an educational program or something, but it wasn't maybe the primary mission of it, there was other aspects to it, then they probably fit comfortably into the other category because they weren't primarily for education or youth services, for example.
Sure.
And so, yeah, I mean, getting back to the subjective thing, I mean, I don't think there's any way to get completely away from that, just because some of these things are pretty diverse in, in what they're helping the community with.
Yeah, united way. I mean, how you gonna put them in a...
It's dependent upon the grant, right?
Yeah.
To a certain extent.
I was gonna say, we're gonna do this with the money.
Yeah. But even that can be pretty broad. And so, you know, community safety and victim services, you're right. I mean, those are, they could, everything could maybe fit in there. It's a pretty broad category, but we tried to limit that to things that were really related to almost public safety type of things that really focused on it.
Condition underway was books. So imagination libraries and books.
So, so here's another thought on this. It just kinda, again, what Richard has said, you know, kinda this is first, first go-round with this, right? This is, we're all learning a little bit here on some, on some areas of improvement potentially, some, you know, where is the subjectivity coming in versus the objectivity? And obviously, this is all kinda new for us. This is the first time we were seeing this. I mean, so, I mean, from a, to a certain extent, I, I would, I hesitate to say this, but I mean, these things that we're doing here are all things that we can change, we can improve, we can change the process. To a certain extent, the trust document, and we don't wanna go changing that, you know, every, every time we get a whatever. I mean, that's maybe after we do this for three years, then we, if we decide, man, we just can't do this effectively. Like, if, if you guys came to us and said, man, we can't do this effectively because there's just way too much subjectivity and there's just no way to get to spend the money, you know, or, or we just can't get to these with, with having these things in here. Well, then maybe we have to start approaching, we have to start approaching some questions on what, what do we need to change in the format or the council to that, at that, to that extent. But, you know, as we learn these things, like I said, I'm, I'm, I think we're gonna need to make some changes to the process and, and potentially, you know, even on the, I keep pointing at them, but on the, the committee side, on our side, how we get the information, all that kinda stuff. So this, this is all good, man. I mean, I think these are good. I think these are good points, good questions, good, and if it's more comfortable, I mean, look, frankly, I'll say, if it sounds like you'd rather wait till February, I'm good with going, but I'm waiting for February. If anybody's not comfortable doing it tonight, I'm okay waiting for February, particularly if we're gonna meet in February.
I was gonna say, "Oh, we're meeting in February anyway."
If we're meeting in February, no matter what.
I hate to say it that way.
A little bit, because the reason I say we need to meet in February is, as I was sitting here, we need to renew the, our DNO insurance for, our DNO insurance for the board. And so if the board's uncomfortable, I will apply for renewal with our current carrier and get a pricing on renewal. And then, you know, we'll need, I think it's February, early March, somewhere in there, to get approval to go, because we'll want to have insurance in place. And that's the next kind of item of business that we'll need to take care of. It makes us want to have a meeting.
When does this need to be to the council?
There's no deadline to the council. It was, the deadline was for the committee to come to the board.
Okay.
And we've...
They're supposed to be written when?
What's that?
July 1.
We're July.
Yeah, so...
So we're not, you know, they communicated that July was, we had planned on late February, March to council, but it was, that's just a plan. It wasn't a necessity. It's not a requirement.
Well, I tell you what, to Ann's point, let me kind of say to Ann's point on kind of making sure we're sort of affirming what they're doing, I think to a certain extent, I agree with that. I also think that we need that committee to also have a little bit of grace from the standpoint of this is our first go-round, you know, to kind of say, maybe if we're gonna try to meet in February, that maybe what we do is try to set up what Richard said for next year, maybe we do it next month. Try to have somebody, the chairperson or if you guys would rather make that a little bit broader of a presentation on how some of this stuff came. And I'll differ with Chairman Gentry just a little bit. I don't necessarily want to see all the weeds, you know, necessarily.
I don't want to see the weeds.
But a highlight, a highlight on some of the subjectivity stuff and some of, and how they dealt with it, that would be nice, to just give us a little bit of, okay, look, if we do get asked about it, we can say, "Listen, man, there was a process in place. I listened to the process. Here's some of the kinds of stuff that they did. Here's, you know, if somebody asks the other question, here's how they dealt with the other question and we're comfortable knowing that other means, other equals other and 15% this category means 15% this category." You know, I don't, I don't think they'll mind giving that to us, you know, but I, I'm kind of cool either way because I'm comfortable with the people on, you know, the way that, you know, all that. So I could knock it out if we want to knock it out, or I'm good waiting if y'all want to wait. I'm...
As long as... Question, if we approve the list tonight, when would the council entertain it?
We'll probably put it on agenda in February. We have one more meeting this month, tomorrow night, and then probably be mid-February sometime.
And if we approve it in February, we'll probably approve the council in March.
March, yeah.
And the checks are made in July.
Yeah, it won't be until July before doing any distribution.
I say from a prudence and due diligence standpoint, we get this presentation in February, you know, but board can vote and we'll, it sounds like, you know...
I would just like to say something. Karen and Angela have embraced this process. They have, they reached out to us months ago. We have taught them everything. We have spent seven years since I've been at Christie Houston, learning best practices. So all of that, trial and error and everything, they got to just bypass all of that and they are doing everything with best practices. They went to Atlanta to be trained by Philanthropy Southeast. They bought the software. They learned the software. You know, it used to be at all the foundations, it was a lot of paper changing, you know, fill out this application. And I just want to applaud them for doing this beautifully, looking at this list. This is beautifully done. I do this all the time. I'm very sensitive that others who don't do grant making, we've got to get everyone comfortable. But in the end, you know, we're in charge of the investments and that team is in charge of these choices. And we can take our two or three talking points and then refer anyone who has questions to the appropriate person on that committee or to someone on the city council. And, you know, we are all about investing the money, but I just want to brag on them because we've worked with them every step of the way. And there's so much to this and they are doing it so well. I'm so proud of the committee. I think they've done a great job.
All right, I'm gonna ask one more question, just thinking about this. What about, what does our schedule look like? Like, are we gonna have a March meeting for sure because of something we're dealing with them or some other, I mean, do we, let's think about what our future, future meetings is next, but let's talk about that so that we can take action tonight or not, based on what that looks like.
I think, based on the email I got, because I was sitting here, that we will need to have a meeting sometime. I said February. Well, we'll do the renewal application when they get back to us. If the rates haven't changed or haven't changed substantially, I'll need to bring that back to the, to the board and have that, have that approved. So February, March.
That can only be done through a meeting?
Hmm?
That can only be done through us having a meeting?
Unless you want to give authority now, that would be, that would be fine. Yeah. The other authority, yeah.
I mean, it's...
Yeah, I don't know what the rate's, I don't know what the rate's gonna be. I can't imagine that they're gonna, you know, check the rates on us because we haven't any claims or anything. So I think it's probably gonna carry forward. We could do, if you grant the authority just to follow through, if the rates haven't changed substantially, then we can take care of that. The other thing, at some point in time, we will need to do, sign grant assurance, grant agreements with the, some of the recipients or all of the recipients. So want to do a resolution that grants authority to one of us probably so we don't have to chase down Kevin to sign grant agreements and grant assurances for a few thousand dollars. That'll be a resolution of the board, so we'll do that sometime. So I think a meeting, if you grant authority on the insurance and if you approve this list, then we don't need a meeting probably until closer to...
We'll need a budget.
The July timeframe, we'll need a budget.
We'll need a, I'm afraid...
Yeah, so sometime in late spring.
April, probably.
Yeah, April, May. That'd be, probably be fine. And meantime, Tim has what he needs to probably get going on.
End of March, end of April is when we would need a next meeting, aside from...
The timeframe, yeah. That would be fine, provided, like I said, you know, I don't know when, I don't remember the date when the DNO insurance runs out. You don't want to have that coverage not in place. So if you, if the board wants to go ahead and vote and say, go forward with that unless the renewal rates change, then we'll get that in place. We'll be, we'll be done with that.
Here would be my, I don't want to say it in the form of a suggestion, but this is a thought. And I think this is as close as I can get to trying to kind of take care of all these things that we got going. A few weeks, you know, I definitely want to give somebody time to get all this information together. It's the first time they'd be doing a report to try to wrap all the, get the weeds into something that's not all the weeds, that kind of a format or whatever. I mean, how about, I'd be comfortable this time around, I'd give the authority on the insurance, no problem. I mean, if it's, if it's not substantially different, that's easy. I don't want to come meet just for that.
Right.
By any stretch. I mean, that, I'll put that out there. So I'd give that authority for sure. And then with that being said, if that's the only other reason that we have to meet, how about we do this particular, we can go ahead and knock this one out. I'll just make a motion, we approve this in a minute, but not yet. But then let's set up a meeting. Let's just, let's just say we're gonna meet in March. That gives them two months or the new, the other committee, two months to get together a good report. We can knock out maybe budget at that time. That'll be close to being able to knock out our budget.
Yeah.
We'll have a little bit of the investments done by then so we can kind of see what the progress is on our investments. So a two-month from now meeting makes a whole lot of sense to me. And because of that, I'd be willing to go ahead and knock out both of these things tonight.
From a sunshine standpoint, is there a scenario where we could make a motion to approve this tonight contingent upon further due diligence, that is to not be discussed amongst the committee, but if anyone has an issue with the due diligence by X date, we notify you of that issue and then it doesn't go to council?
You could do that. By the end, just say by the end of March. That's a good way to do it because then we just make sure we don't send it to council. I don't tell you what your job is, but you could just not send it to council until after March and it wouldn't get done.
And that's, I mean, informing what they have been approved for, the applicants, is that okay?
Sure. And the Committee on Contributions is set to meet as kind of a follow-up debrief, what do we want to see different in the next round of applications? We can include that as part, you know, like part of that backside report.
Yeah.
Because we've done a complete circle. These are the things that, that we're looking to do in preparation for the next grant cycle and present it as a, as a circular wrap-up.
And that's something we don't, yeah, I mean...
That's an idea, Richard.
And we, I want to make sure we all have an opportunity to look at it, but especially our chairman who really does want to look at it. I would be comfortable with Ms. Davis's position of, let's move forward, show our support. We know the due diligence is there even though there's some subjectivity behind it. But I'd like to, I'd like to move forward with that contingency that we have an opportunity to look at, especially for Chairman Gentry.
Absolutely. And a lot of the information, just the website, that kind of piece, I can, I can do one-on-one and send you, you know, just if you have questions, reach out anytime.
I'll restate, we are not to discuss this amongst ourselves. It's a unilateral conversation with Craig if there is any issues to avoid any sunshine law.
Karen, I think you have something, Kevin.
I would like to just kind of provide a broad 360 overview of the process so you might feel a little bit more comfortable with your, with your decision going into this. So we did receive 47 applications. When all those applications came in, Angela and myself did a review of every application to make sure it met the bare minimum requirement of being a 501(c)(3) organization, that they were providing services in the city of Murfreesboro and that it was year-round. So we had three applicants that didn't meet those. So they didn't proceed any further in the process. So of those 44 applications, those were moved into the review panel process. So it went through a due diligence review by Angela and myself first to make sure that all the documents and everything were there. And then the second phase of that was the Committee on Contributions evaluation. And so they had a scoring sheet. So they were provided a series of questions and then they scored them, you know, on a scale of one to five or on a scale of one to 10. And then there were three questions, would you fund this, yes or no? What would you recommend funding if you voted yes? How much would you fund them for? And then provided any additional comments. And then as well as, what category do you feel like this program best fits? So they were able to select if it was community safety and victim services or education. And so then the software enabled us to export that as a spreadsheet. So it averaged all their scores and gave a percentage ranking. So then we were able to identify how they ranked percentage-wise from all the scores combined. And then we were able to identify how many of those received all yeses, how many of those maybe received one no. And then from all that, and then we were able to determine, based on their recommended funding, what the average recommendation would be. So all that was coalesced into a report and we can provide further details on that. But just wanted to kind of give you a...
The applicant actually checked?
No, the reviewer checked how they felt that organization.
Okay.
And by and far, they were very consistent. So we use that to say the majority of people felt like it fit into this category. So that's where we aligned it. There were a few that we adjusted based on program or project. But by and far, it was the committee's recommendation based on the consensus.
Karen and Angela, I think that's all I'm talking about right there.
Yeah.
That's it. I mean, you know, hopefully y'all's presentation wouldn't last 15 minutes. I just want to be able to say, yep, we, you know, they gave us a quick presentation, looked good to me.
Yeah.
They explained clearly why certain, well, maybe not certain organization, we may not need to go to that level, but, you know, why certain criteria was met, perhaps why certain, whatever you guys think is most important. And that way, we can say confidently that we assessed what was done and we agree with it.
I think the biggest...
Karen, we can show the founding software, too. That will really open everyone's eyes.
Yeah.
So again, I don't want anybody to take away that I think that there was anything negligently done in this process because I don't. I mean, personally, I know actual and folks. So I don't think that one bit. I just want to be able to say, yep, almost kind of like you said, yep.
I feel like you did your...
We got enough information to support the fact that we approved this recommendation. That's it. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, that's right. That's good. It's no problem.
So I'm fine with approving this tonight on contingency that we review it. And maybe it just goes to the city council in a subsequent meeting. Because like you all say, I don't, I think everybody in here is pretty busy and they may not want to meet just to meet. I'm also fine with approving, like you, I think I'm not using my terms appropriately to authority to proceed with insurance as well. Then we can move accordingly in March. So, yeah, so...
And we'll still have to come back to fut-, well, we'll come back to future meetings, I guess. But with all that being said, if you're good with it, I'll go ahead and try to formulate this motion in terms of the, I'll start with the insurance because that's the easy one. I make a motion that we give guys the authority to renew that after getting a quote and that there has not a substantial change.
It's been moved. Can we get a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any additional conversational questions about that? Hearing none. Can board members approve by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's been properly approved. And then do you want to make the second motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the distribution list given to us by the Committee on Contributions with the contingency that the city council would hold off until after the end of March to approve that, to give us time to review a presentation to explain some of the details of the, not only the, how they came up with their allocations, but also the, the areas of, whatever this right-hand column is.
Categorization.
Categorization, yep. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's on the table. Can we get a second?
Second.
All those, well, any additional questions or comments before? All those in favor, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion has been approved.
Mr. Timbal, do we need to make a motion to resolve to allow you to sign those contracts with the recipients of the grants?
Yeah, we can hold off until, we're not gonna do that until July. Let's hold off to the meeting, then I can put it in a resolution. So we'll have a record of it.
Put that on the agenda for March.
Yeah.
Those one...
We'll have, for future meetings, we'll have Brenda canvas and see what people's schedules are like, start running into spring break, I think, in March.
End of March.
Spring break for Murfreesboro City, I looked it up, it's the 25th of the 29th.
Well, the end of March.
So that may not affect many of us, but, or it might affect you, but it will affect that, I bet that contributions committee has some young folks on it.
Yeah, so we'll canvas and find a date and set a meeting sometime then.
Only other item I wanted to make sure I mentioned is the annual investment conflict of interest disclosure statement. Do we need to review or sign that?
Well, that's a good question. I'll have to take a look at that.
It's interesting. I was looking through the packet and I was wondering about that and then lo and behold, I came across it.
The policy on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me take a look at that. We can do that probably in March if we need to do it. Or I can, I can circulate it and people can fill those out, send them back.
Good. Any other business that we need to discuss?
Yeah.
It is six...
We need to get through this. It's in the packet. I don't know.
I know, brief financial report, but...
Nope, let's move on.
You sure?
Looked at, looks great.
All right, it is 6:00 PM on the dot. We consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.